All right, so I think we are live. It is 5 o'clock. I'm gonna call to order the Village of Oregon Village Board Meeting. Today is Monday, November 18th. Could we have a roll call, please? Horton.
Yes, here.
Donovan.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Balig.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Glish.
Here.
So item number three is the Village Board will convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, Print 1E, to discuss the possible terms of the new School Resource Officer Agreement between the Oregon School District and the Village of Oregon and pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Print 1C, to continue considering performance evaluation information relating to the police chief. So can I have a motion to go into closed session, please?
So moved.
Second. Roll call?
Oh, we're gonna go over there.
Carpenter. Yes. Peterson.
Yes.
Glish.
Yes.
Donovan.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Horton.
Yes.
Balig.
Yes.
All right, so we are gonna go into the other room and we will be back here approximately All right, so it is still Monday, November 18th, 2019, and the board has reconvened into open session. Do we need a motion to do that?
We did.
We did, okay, we're good. All right, so item five is President Carpenter's statement regarding police chief's evaluation issues and update regarding the new School Resource Officer Agreement, including possible board action. And is this meeting still, this meeting days is still correct, the November 26th?
Yes.
Okay, and then there is, just a note to the public, there is an SRO meeting on Tuesday, November 26th at 10:30 a.m.
The meeting that was gonna be tomorrow got canceled.
Gotcha.
That's what I put about that.
All right, so I've written a statement. I apologize for reading this, but it's long and I can't remember it all. So bear with me as I read this. So the public has asked me to explain why the Village Board has held multiple closed sessions discussing the performance of our police chief. In the interest of public transparency, I want to briefly outline the facts of why this agenda item is before us tonight. First, earlier this year, Police Chief Brian Yule asked the Village Board for our help with negotiating a new School Resource Officer Contract with the Oregon School District because the current contract was not meeting the police department's needs. The board responded to that request and began conducting outreach to the school, which resulted in the Village Board proposing a shortened contract which outlined Chief Yule's requests. The school board subsequently declined that contract because they did not agree with its terms. It was the Village Board's understanding that we, as a board, would continue to negotiate with the school to come to a final agreement. Chief Yule began a public campaign on the Oregon Police Department's Facebook page disagreeing with the school board's decision to not sign the proposed shortened contract from the Village Board. He conducted media interviews disagreeing with the decision, including a particularly contentious interview with WIBA AM or FM. I believe that further negotiations between the Village Board and the school board required a different approach with the goal of helping the Village Board repair our relationship with the school board. I am proud to say that with the leadership of Trustee Jenna Jacobson and Trustee Randy Glish, we now have an interim agreement with the school, and most importantly, we now have an Oregon police officer back in the school. During recent negotiations, Oregon School District representatives have made it very clear to us that they will not sign a final School Resource Officer Agreement unless it specifically states Lieutenant Jenny Pagankopf, second-in-command at the Oregon Police Department, supervises that program. In addition, over the course of the past several months, Village Board members and the administration have received communication from citizens complaining about their interactions with our Chief of Police. The board has addressed these concerns with Chief Yule. The Village Board is currently working with a private entity to investigate the police chief's conduct during September 6th stop of a juvenile. The complaint addresses the chief's reasoning for the stop of the child, his conduct during the stop of the child, and the chief's communications to the child's mother. We expect a final report on this matter from the investigator in the coming weeks. The board developed a framework for Chief Yule to advise the board as to the effectiveness of the mission and the strategies of the Village of Oregon Police Department, and a plan for Chief Yule to improve relationships with community and school leaders, as well as to present a plan on how his department will focus on community policing and outreach. Chief Yule has prepared a report for the board, and we look forward to hearing that report tonight. Our next item is to discuss an agreement to formalize official points of contact for the village as it pertains to the School Resource Officer. So Matt, do you wanna walk us through that process?
Yeah, very briefly, as you indicated, the village has been working with the school district on developing a School Resource Officer Agreement or a new agreement. The terms of the agreement that have been prepared to this point do indicate that the program would be supervised by Lieutenant Pagankopf and that the School Resource Officer would be directly supervised by Detective Sergeant Chad Schaub. We have prepared an order and discussed this order with Chief Yule to address the chain of command issues that are related to, or the supervisory-related issues that are related to that agreement for both the board and Chief Yule to consider. And so that is before you tonight, and I think we wanted to give Chief Yule an opportunity to speak to that order as well.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I'm gonna apologize to the community members out there. I'm not feeling well, so I'm gonna try and get through this without any kind of issues that may happen regarding my illness. But I do wanted to say that the order that is being proposed is really nothing different than how we operate already. Detective Schaub is the first-line supervisor for the School Resource Officer Program, and Lieutenant Pagankopf is responsible for overseeing the School Resource Officer Program. So she has been tasked with that, I think, as a, any leader would, give their people opportunities to lead and provide them with the opportunity to be successful at that, and that's what we're trying to do here. I think she's done a great job so far, and I think that the order just kind of explains that a little bit further.
So because we talked about this order in closed session, what we're going to do is we're going to be adding the text of this order, as well as my statement, to the packet, and that will be done probably tomorrow.
It will be.
Right, so the public can see the text of both of those things. I suspect if anyone wanted the text of either of these things, contact Mike.
I'll send.
And he would be happy to send it to you.
Yep.
So I guess I'm looking for a motion from the board to approve, what do I call this?
Orders of the Village Board relating to the SRO program.
That. Yes, I'll make that motion. All right, do you have a second? Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, now, Chief, you are gonna have a presentation for us about police department strategies.
Yep. So I am going to outline some of the strategies that we talked about, three strategies in particular, 14 issues that deal with the Village of Oregon, and the issues to keep the village in Oregon as safe as reasonably possible. Before I talk about the issues, I would like to address the Village Board President's, Village Board President's statement first. When it comes to the safety of children, along with any parent, I feel passionately about this topic. As the chief of police, I have additional responsibility for school safety within our village. In this regard, I've always had three goals. First, to ensure the best as I can, and the Village of Oregon Police Department can the safety of our children while in school. Second, to whenever and however possible, prevent harm or violent incidents from occurring in the school. Third, when prevention is not enough, then ensuring the men and women of the Oregon Police Department are properly equipped and as well-trained as possible to respond quickly. Safe communities are the result of many factors. The citizens and their commitment to neighborhoods, civic leaders, church leaders and their members, the strong business climate. One key ingredient for maintaining a safe community has to be a well-functioning police department. I'm proud to say that the Village of Oregon Police Department meets and exceeds the state standards for policing, and the Village of Oregon was rated the second-safest community in Wisconsin. In order to have a well-functioning police department, we must continue to invest in training, recruiting, equipping, and supervising the men and women who place their lives on the line for this community. We also welcome public scrutiny. We have and continue to pursue excellence in law enforcement. When the public has concerns, we must address them. When necessary, we hold people accountable, and we are held accountable. I plan to have open meetings to address any concerns from the community, and to have, and to reach out, and I've already reached out to some of those members already to start those open meetings, so. That, then I would like to talk about some of the strategies, and those are in the packet. So one of the strategies, as I mentioned, is collaborating with members to identify and creatively solve problems. So we came up with a few issues that we believe are of concern. The number-one issue that we get complaints about is traffic, whether that's speeding, OWI, pedestrian safety, or bike safety. And so I've outlined some of the ideas there. The second issue that we've been having, along with other areas around Dane County, is burglaries to the home. So we've had meetings already in regards to those. We've been using social media campaign, and Sergeant Luke Cast is here tonight. He is our media guru. He has sent out some fantastic information on Twitter and Facebook, just reminding people to lock up their stuff, close their garage doors, those types of things. So he's done a great job with that. Drugs and alcohol, obviously, with any area around this area, drugs and alcohol are a problem, not only in the schools, but in the community as well, so I've outlined a lot of information there. Mental health, we seem to be dealing more and more with mental health issues, so I'm looking to partner with people in the community, especially the senior center, to help with some of those issues. School safety, a lot of talk has been regarding that, and I think that we'll continue with that. Lieutenant Pagankopf will lead that, and we can hopefully resolve some of those issues. And another issue that's been brought to my attention is possibly racial issues, and how do we go about in dealing with those? I've long partnered with Harry Hawkins and Dr. Reverend Gia, the NEMI program. I'll continue to do that. We'll continue to monitor how we police in the community, how that affects minorities, and what we can do to better learn some of the things from that on how we police. Lastly, domestic violence is another big issue in our community. I give the board reports, or I give the board reports all the time, about some of the common things that we have, and domestic violence has been one of those. So we're gonna look to partner with other folks on how to prevent that, looking to follow-up with victims. One of the things that I'd really like to hit home a little bit more is our communication with victims and what we can do to help them, and especially in these types of situations. The second strategy that we were looking at is engaging in education enforcement efforts to gain voluntary compliance with the law. We already do a lot of these things, but I don't know that people necessarily understand or see what we do. One of them is talking about seatbelt compliance. I can tell you personally, seatbelts save lives. My daughter was in an accident, so, sorry. So I can tell you that they save lives. So we're gonna continue working on those type of things with the community and educating them. Pedestrians, I see some folks, crossing guards over here, dealing with pedestrians and crosswalks and things like that. We need to continue to talk about those things and how we make things safer for pedestrians on our streets today. Speeding, again, like I said, talk about those things and how we can better educate our community members on speeding, work on getting data to find out where the troubled spots are so we can address those challenges. Underage drinking has been a long challenge for us. The board deals with that on a regular occasion. You know, we do do some programs. We have liaison officers work with local businesses to help dealing with that as well, but we're looking to partner to become more effective. Finally, the third strategy that was outlined is thoroughly investigate criminal acts, to hold perpetrators accountable and provide relief for crime victims. One of the main things that I would like the community to know is we are an accredited agency now as of November 8th, and the accreditation process really hits home on all of this. I'm a lead assessor for Wiley Egg, so I do this for other agencies as well, but the accreditation process is 240-plus standards, and it deals with anything from organization and management, which is missions, which is oath of office, that type of thing, to personnel services, collective bargaining, grievance procedures, performance evaluations, promotional processes, recruitment and selection. I talked about that a little bit, and how we are able to function and have an equitable recruitment process. It deals with commendations, disciplinary procedures, management, use of force, operations, and how we patrol the streets, how we interact with the public, how we transport, how temporary detentions works, what our responsibilities are, if we actually search people, if we detain them. Community relations is one of those aspects that I deal with, communications as far as how we handle our communications with the Dane County Communications Center, our records, how we store our records, and how we use open records, evidence, training. So accreditation is really the whole packet of what we do in relation to this third strategy. And I think that, you know, we are one of 43 agencies now in the state that meet or exceed these state standards. So that deals with citizens' complaints, that deals with crime victims, and how we interact with those. So really, I've kinda gone above and beyond some of the things that most agencies do by becoming an accredited agency in order to better perform and better handle some of the issues that people may not necessarily know we deal with in the police department. So with that, I'm happy to go into further detail, talk more about any particular questions that the board may have.
Any particular questions that the board has? Otherwise, this is a lot of information. My thought was that we would perhaps digest this a little bit and then put it on a future agenda to go through in depth.
I do that. Yes.
I do, I wrote this down, Chief, while you were talking, so I wanted to make sure I got it right. I wanna give you credit for your responsiveness to our concerns with your performance evaluation over these past few weeks. I feel like you, and our concerns are the community concerns, right? Because we're elected officials, so we respond to what people tell us. And through this report and through your actions tonight, I feel like we're really starting to move forward successfully, so I wanna give you credit for that.
Appreciate that.
So, yes, yes, sir.
I'm new to this, this is my second since being appointed, but it seems to me that, and maybe it's inappropriate, but between now and when we have a chance to really look at this in depth, if it wouldn't be appropriate for Chief Yule to meet with maybe Mike Grace or city administrator on a weekly basis, just to see how things are going on prepping for initiation of some of these things, such as the neighborhood meetings, and the service, I would suggest that we had Service Club meetings as well to that. But I think we need to start doing something to show that we're being responsive to what the community has told us, and we should be preparing for that, and either it's weekly or bi-weekly or some type of meeting where it shows that we're trying to prepare to get these things going, even though we haven't had a chance to really delve in depth at some of these strategies yet.
Yeah, we met monthly in the past, so we can certainly work on that, yeah.
Yeah, because as a board, we only, well, we meet every two weeks, and then we have special board meetings, and that's not often helpful for you to give you timely feedback. So if Mike is agreeable to that, I think that would be a good, a good move. That's a good suggestion. David?
Sure.
Any other feedback or comments? All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
We know you're not feeling well, so you need to go.
We're all together, so.
All right.
Right, as I say, I can do that in a governmental agreement. Why don't you take off?
Are you sure?
Absolutely. I can do it. If you don't feel good, take off. I can do it.
You do.
Unless the board wants to skip to that, or you go ahead and do that, and then we...
Sure, what number is that?
That is, let me find it here.
We got a whole budget thing to go over, too.
So you're gonna say, but it's 14G.
Okay.
Go ahead and do that.
Sure. All right, so let's do 14G, and so the chief can go if he wants to. So we have a discussion of possible action regarding intergovernmental agreement between the County of Dane and the Village of Oregon. We have recommended motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the County of Dane and the Village of Oregon for 2020. Please note funding in the 2020 budget, and per Rudy, the police department has been very pleased with the county's technical support. So why don't you just give us a super brief overview here?
Yeah, this is just the IGA that we have with Dane County. As you know, before we switched the records management systems, we were with the city. That was not working out very well, and so every year, we have this agreement that we do with the county, kind of outlines some of the costs that are involved with that. And just to give the public and you guys just a reminder that even with all this information and the costs that are involved, we're still saving anywhere from $6,000 to $8,000 a year based on what we were paying with the city, and we are getting much better service, they are much more responsive to our needs, they seem to be, well, I'll just, I'll just put it this way, they seem to be more on the ball than we had before. So we're very happy with this joint collaboration between us and the county as well.
All right. Yeah, Cory?
I'll make a motion to approve the IGA.
So we have a motion and a second, second by Jacobson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, thank you very much. All right, now we're going back to item seven.
Yep.
This is the 2020 village budget. So note that the entire 2020 revised budget is on the village's webpage. It's very long, I downloaded it today, it's a lot of spreadsheets. So we are going to have a public hearing right now, so I'm going to open the public hearing for the 2020 village budget, and then we have a chance for the public to make some comments. And then we're gonna, after that, Mike's gonna have PowerPoint slides, including the review. So is there anyone here that would like to come forward and comment on the 2020 budget? All right, so that's...
Are you on PowerPoint?
On to the PowerPoint, and then if anyone has comments, we can always go back.
Absolutely.
All right, so here we go. 2020 budget.
So I'm not gonna read this, because I know the board has gone through the PowerPoint and gone through the budget, obviously, but I do want to thank the board members for your input and direction during the budget process, and the department, and especially Lisa and Candy for their hard work preparing the budget. And I think Jerry always reminds me that we should put this on the PowerPoint, that people are watching this, realize this is not the only meeting we had on the budget. We had two long meetings in October, and I think it's important to note that. On page three, or slide three, we have the tax levy sheet that shows the, we're using the value of $305,000.
Oh, thank you.
Which came out to be about $88.64 increase for homes, for an average house in the village. On the next slide is the actual levy, and you'll notice that the levy limit, we're still about $58,000 under the limit, which would be good as we go into '21, and we talked about that a little bit in a couple of those October meetings.
At the October 14th budget meeting, the board approved option 3A, which directed the staff to keep the tax increase below $90 for an average house, which we did. The second part of the option 3A was to keep contingency at $66,800, and due to many factors, which Lisa and I will talk about, that's down to $53,000, which still is a lot, a lot higher than we've had in the past year, so we're in good shape going into the 2020 budget.
Excuse me, Mike, would you explain what contingency is?
That is, that's unexpected things that happen. For example, when the board approved paying OCRN as a premium structure for the youth center $20,000, we took it out of contingency, but that was on the budget.
Very good, no, I just wanted the public to know that.
Yep. And you'll see, when we go through, we end up, when we had an unexpected cost or something that came in, Lisa and I would debate, you know, decreasing costs someplace else or lessening contingency, and so we did that a couple times. And so what we did was, these are actually changes from the, when we gave you the budget back in September, there's 80, I'm sorry, 97 changes. And so you want us to go through each of these tonight?
I mean, we can read them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just kidding.
If anyone has any questions about one, just feel free to bring that up.
And I do wanna point out, if you wanna do, flip to page, slide 12, right at the end here, we got good news from the county. The county gave us more funding, the county board, thank you, you're a senior.
You're very welcome.
Senior.
I have nothing to do with it. You're welcome.
And then the, and it just happens, you know, where we go to the open enrollment period for health insurance, we had an employee in the library take health insurance, and this just demonstrates what a great working setup we have with Jennifer and the library board. We decided to split the increase, and we, so Lisa and I found in our budget, and they found in the library, we're better than.
Excellent.
I do wanna publicly thank Jennifer and the library board for helping us figure that out, so.
Thank you.
Thanks to you, too.
Then on slide 13, it's just a summary of the total funding expenditures, that's budget to budget for expenditures, the total tax levy, estimated share revenue, estimated expenditure restraint, that number's going down because we're not getting any in 2020. We hope the next budget qualifies for 2022. Fortunately, highway 8 went up quite a bit, and as I mentioned, Dane County Senior Center funding actually is going down 1,300, but that's, I think it was up, I think we were showing an $8,000 decrease, so they could get like $60,000, $70,000 more than we anticipated, so it was good. The next slide shows that some of the street projects we're gonna be doing, we've been talking about the Janesville Street, Park Street intersection, and the reconstruction of Park Street, that's gonna be a big project Jeff will be handling next year, as will, as well as Mill and Orelate projects, and then Jeff will be coming forward some additional streets for 2020. We're going to be talking to the board again about the Rotary Bike Trail repairs, and then now that Lisa's here, we're gonna start working on developing the southeast business park, we're gonna borrow some money to start doing the work on that next year. And then I did something a little bit different this year, Lisa and I decided to show you some of the 2020 budget impacts. You already seen some of the other ones during the last PowerPoint and things we talked about, but I just, I highlighted some of the things that is making the budget go up, and we did talk about a lot during the fall, that there's a lot of personnel increases, a lot of staff changes, and so they're listed in here. I think the one thing I wanna emphasize, and I think the board will find it very interesting next year, is the work on that number-one item, which is the financial analysis with elders. I think you're gonna find it very interesting as we go through getting ready for the 21st budget, but also just all the borrowing we have, how we're gonna, how we're gonna juggle that, and hopefully not increase taxes too dramatically for our village residents going forward, so it should be kinda interesting. Are there any questions about any of those budget impacts, and we've talked about them?
Cory?
I had thought that we were going to budget $20,000 for the administrative recruitment.
That's, so, that's...
It's kinda like balancing it.
Yeah, actually, that kinda ties into AA, when we got the notice from the bank cutting our interest rate, we had to cut our income down, so we, I think we took money out of contingency, we did a couple things, and we did take $5,000. Okay. Yeah. You know, and I figured someone's gonna ask me that, that goes back to that $50,000, almost $50,000 we have, over $50,000 we have contingency. It's all in that same other general government fund, so I think, I think we'll be okay. Okay. Any other questions on any of those? Okay. Then we listed the equipment on page 17, those are some of the major things we're gonna be doing, including a phone system, hopefully next year, we're starting, Candy and I are starting to work on that with Rudy. And then that is the 2020 budget, we're happy to present it. Any questions overall regarding it?
Just one quick comment, maybe more than a question. I've talked a little bit with Mike on this already. Last week, Jeff held the stormwater forum, and I thought it really went well. I wasn't there, but I did see it taped, and I watched the entire thing. And as part of that, as I was watching it, I was thinking that there was something that the community, this board had to do to show leadership within the community on what's causing all the stormwater issues that we're having out there. And it's nothing that we can control worldwide, but it's certainly something that we can control with individual action, and I think we have to show some leadership on that. And I know we're almost all the way through the budget process, so it's really late to bring this up, but early next year, and Mike has indicated that he's willing to do this, is he's scheduled meetings to start the discussion on what the board can do to minimize its impact, its footprint, on the carbon environment, if you will, out there. footprint, on the carbon environment, if you will, out there. And I would wholeheartedly agree to that, depending on what those actions are, obviously, but it's something that I think we should do, because it's something that we have to show leadership in, and it will impact our budget, because it will cost in some way for us to do things, and people need to be prepared for that, but we can't wait any longer. It's something that we have to really consider and do, and if we start earlier in the process, we'll have more time to show the impact, and we can bring it in over a much longer timeframe than if we had to do it tomorrow. So I think if we start these discussions early in 2020, it'll be a good thing, we just have to be prepared on what it will mean for 2020 budget.
And what David's talking about, I mentioned that we're going to be having a public works meeting in January, talking about the stormwater issues, and I just thought we can, we can tie into, Jeff and I have been talking about this for the last couple of years, you know, trying to potentially making our fleet more efficient, you know, things like that, and I think we just start, we need to start looking at that. And I think, I think that really Bob Limire said that was really interesting, was there's a new norm now, there's a new normal out there, and we need to start being, that's what David's talking about.
And we can, we certainly can work with our utility on this.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, they've got programs, I know I worked for a utility before I semi-retired, and they've got programs that we can capitalize on.
Right. Thank you.
All right. So anyone from the, the public hearing is still open, if anyone wants to come forward? So I, everyone's always looking for a soundbite or a headline here, so I'll just, I'll read this sentence from our packet, that the 2020 budget will result in an increase of eighty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents for an average assessed home compared to eighty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents in nineteen, 2019. And so this was, is under the increase of ninety dollars for an average assessed home, which was our, our board goal at the beginning of the process. So thank you, staff, for listening to the board's direction, and for responding, and even coming in under that ninety dollar number.
Thank you.
All right, so at this time, I will close the public hearing. And I guess I'm looking for a motion to approve resolution 19-32, adopting the 2020 budget, and changes to the budget since the October 14th budget meeting.
Make that motion.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone, for your amazing work on another super complicated budget. All right, moving on to item 8A. So this is the village attorney and the village administrator report. So we have a proposed banking agreement revision. This is a review of the email from State Bank of Cross Plains regarding the bank lowering the village's interest rate from local government investment pool plus 1.45 percent to the local government investment pool plus point five percent. This would change the rate that was approved in the banking agreement signed on May 13th of this year. Village staff will have additional information to discuss at our December 2nd board meeting regarding this matter. Is there anything that you would like to talk about right now?
I think Lisa are gonna do some work on this between now and the next board meeting. We'll have some recommendations or options for the board to consider at that point.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Jerry?
Yes, do we have any other accounts at that bank? Other than this account?
Jerry, we moved, we moved, we moved from Chase, we moved from Chase.
So they have everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Except for that one thing that you were talking about.
Yeah, there was one action that we requested in our RFP that we're still working on.
Okay.
It's complicated.
Okay, so if this happens, do you have a dollar amount that it's gonna impact the 2020 budget?
Well, we figured about ten thousand dollars.
Okay, because you used this amount, or the...
Yep.
The bid amount in the 2020 budget.
Right. And we got this email, or Lisa got it on November 7th, so yeah, that's what we had to go back and make some changes to the budget.
Okay. Any thoughts on soliciting bids from other banks?
I'm just gonna, I gotta do a little homework on this before I talk about it with Lisa, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other, yes, Amanda?
Hi, I'm trying to figure out how these work, do they just have the right to change this? Didn't we sign an agreement that's supposed to last a certain amount of time?
So they, we signed an agreement with them that was on May 13th. Either party can give a 90-day notice to terminate the agreement, that's the terms.
Okay.
It's a three-year agreement, subject to a 90-day termination provision.
Interesting. So in order to make this change, they would have to terminate the agreement, we'd have to sign a whole new agreement?
No, they're requesting our agreement to an amendment at this point. So if we're unable to reach a resolution, then either party could terminate.
I see. Randy?
So, so we approved them through an RFP process, is that correct?
Well, remember, the, when we went through the RFP process, it was Union Bank and Trust that was the successful, that we decided to pursue an agreement with. And then there was an acquisition of that bank by State Bank of Cross Plains. We were informed during that process that State Bank of Cross Plains indicated it would honor the terms.
Oh, they did.
At that time.
Correct?
Correct.
Absolutely.
But now they've changed their mind.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, Corey?
From a legal perspective, are we obligated to rebid this versus just accepting an amendment for a reduced amount?
You are not required to, there is no required legal procedure that you have to follow in terms of dealing with this, you have a lot of latitude. You can choose to negotiate with this bank, you can choose to negotiate with other lenders, you can choose to do another RFP, so you'll have a lot of latitude.
Yeah, Jeff? Can we reach out to the other institutions that responded to our RFP to see if their deals are still available?
So that's what we're gonna do in the next couple of weeks. Just be patient, please, we're gonna work on this a little bit.
Patience?
Patience.
I want, how much money are we talking about? Like, how much money does State Bank of Cross Plains have of ours, of the villages?
Right now?
It depends on when, when, I mean, during tax collection, it can be a lot.
Yeah. Can we just do a ballpark?
Right now, there's about seventeen point seven million dollars in their bank.
Wow.
It's almost eighteen million dollars.
Yeah.
And then we start tax collection, which is, I think we collect normally, what, about twenty million dollars in the next couple of months?
So like a balloon up to like thirty-eight million dollars.
More than.
And this is ten thousand dollars. Well, no, that's the, that's the impact, yeah.
Yeah.
It just seems like that we might be a major client, is that, or am I naive and we're not a major client?
So, so I will admit, I've been kind of busy with other things, getting ready for the meeting, so I haven't, I haven't had time to, even to, actually bring you into the discussion with the bank.
Sure.
I'm just saying, could I just have a couple of weeks?
Okay, all right. Well, stop complaining now.
No, you're, you're, but I'm just saying, we just...
We're not happy.
I would just like to point out that we're not happy.
No.
I will make...
And perhaps you could convey that in your negotiations.
It was sprung on us, and we just guessed at ten thousand dollars, we're not sure exactly what the ending, because we've only been with them six months, so we haven't go through, gone through a whole year of our process, of our ups and downs and our bank balances, so it could be more, it could be less, to be honest.
All right, well, oh, yes, Amanda?
I have a related question here, I'm wondering how many hours it took you to switch all of our accounts there in the first place? Because I think that's a consideration, too, if we go with someone else, it's gonna take time to switch it over, so give a ballpark idea of...
Well, because it involved multiple staff people, I mean, it was a lot of hours, but we just went through it, and we've already talked to the staff about it. Since we just went through it, we know a lot of things that we need to do in the switch, if we were to make another switch. So it would probably be easier, but it's still gonna take time.
Okay.
So at the next meeting, I promise you I will have some, with Lisa's help.
That's fine.
We will have some, like, options of what you can do, and we've discussed with the staff, I just didn't have time to sort of nail them down with Lisa. But I think I may ask you to weigh into, I gotta ask you for a little favor, so.
Okay. Well...
Patience.
Yes.
Patience.
Two weeks.
All right. Still disappointed, just saying. Item 8B.
No, you can say that, Lisa, go ahead and say that, that's...
Eighteen million dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we are moving on to item 8B. This is from the August 7th, 2019 Park Board meeting, trustee Horton. And Corey, I'll just let you take it from here.
Sure. From our August 7th, 2019 Park Board meeting, we had a discussion regarding amending resolution 18-09, which is for the development of J.C. Park West to incorporate pickleball. Court moved, seconded by me, to recommend to the village board to amend resolution 18-09 to include pickleball from the final concept plan, noting the potential to initially construct six courts instead of 12, and including the installation of lighting. That motion carried six to zero. Our recommended motion is to approve resolution 19-31 for the development of J.C. Park West.
I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion or questions?
So just, like I said, so we incorporated the Park Board motion, but we also included the village board's motion increasing the borrowing, so we did it all in one resolution. Does that make sense? Okay.
All right, all those in favor of approving resolution 19-31, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C, we have a discussion of possible action regarding opioid litigation class action issues. We have a recommended motion, our village attorney is recommending that, to not opt out of the class action suit.
Correct.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about this?
You all stop me if you feel like I'm giving you too much. So the village received a notice from a multi-district litigation class action lawsuit that has joined a number of separate cases into a single case for procedural purposes. The case is centralized in the U.S. District Court for the Northern District of Ohio. In this case, the judge that's been assigned to this case has certified a massive settlement class in an effort to reach a broad settlement that would apply to all municipalities that opt to participate in this class. This particular proceeding includes three claims against 13 defendants that include drug manufacturers, pharmacies, and distributors involved in the spread of prescription opioids. There's no settlement at this point. At this stage of the proceedings, the court sent a notice to municipalities saying that you have until November 22nd to decide whether to opt out. If you do nothing, you will be in, you will be a member of the class, and you'll be bound by any settlement agreement. So the question you have to decide is whether to opt out. This settlement class is being steered by a group of 49 class representatives and their legal counsel. Only one of the class representatives is a Milwaukee, Wisconsin municipality, that's Milwaukee County. The way this case is structured, as we understand it, is that any settlement proceeds are intended to be distributed through counties. We've been in touch with Dane County and have been told by corp counsel for Dane County that they are participating, they are, Dane County is a named plaintiff in at least one of the federal lawsuits that's been consolidated in this proceeding. The corp counsel was able to direct us to an allocation map on the settlement class website that shows how much money each county and municipality would be estimated to receive in the event of a theoretical one billion dollar settlement. And that map shows the village of Oregon receiving just under five thousand dollars. That's based on, again, a one billion dollar settlement, and all of the municipalities who are currently participants staying in the case. If municipalities drop out, then there would be fewer dollars or fewer parties to share the dollars with. We also spoke to the Wisconsin Department of Justice to find out whether the state is doing anything that the village should know about on this issue that would potentially affect your decision. And actually, one of my partners, who is a litigation attorney, is the guy who really looked into this, and he said after talking with the Department of Justice, his recommendation continued to be that he saw no reason why the village of Oregon should opt out of the settlement class. There's an opportunity for you to participate, it doesn't look like we're talking a lot of money, and we're not aware of another readily available vehicle that the village could become a part of that would present another opportunity at all, not to mention a better opportunity. So our recommendation is to not opt out.
All right, yes, Corey?
Are there any benefits of opting out? Does that then enable you to have different cases later, or I guess what would be the benefit of opting out?
Well, the benefit of opting out, yeah, would be, you think you might be able to be more successful in pursuing a different opportunity, but the village of Oregon obviously is not necessarily gonna launch its own lawsuit, that would be a huge undertaking, you're not gonna do that. And so the question is, do we see another path that would be a better opportunity for you that's available now or reasonably foreseeable? And after looking at this litigation, looking at what this Department of Justice has said, and we talked to somebody there, and with Dane County, this is the, this seems to be, we don't see another opportunity to, that would make it worthwhile for you to opt out of this one.
Okay, thank you.
Can I say that there won't be another opportunity that would come up that we don't know about? No, but this looks like the best available option.
Yeah, Jenna?
Do we have any line of sight into restrictions that might be placed on any settlement dollars that come?
I do not.
Yeah, David?
Should we look at this as the case against the cigarette companies?
This is similar to that, it's like the tobacco litigation, but it's opioid, the opioid litigation.
The state was the lead on that, though, correct?
With the tobacco?
Yes.
The state was with the tobacco.
And they got to take the money and use it as they so desired.
In that case, that's my recollection of how that happened. In this case, there are, as I said, there are 50-some lead municipal parties driving this effort. Municipalities are the parties that the funds would flow through. Now, as we understand it, the communities that really have the most damage that they've experienced are communities that are larger, that have public hospitals, that have really incurred tremendous costs associated with it.
Okay. But at least, this is driving it towards the municipalities more than the state taking it and saying, we know how to use it best.
That appears to be correct.
All right, does someone want to make a motion to not opt out of the class action suit?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Matt. Okay, so, we're gonna jump to 15B2, so that Matt can get out of here, is that right?
Yes, please.
No offense, Matt, but then we can stop paying you to be here.
I can go home and have dinner.
Excellent. All right, so 15B2 is discussion of possible action regarding approving the ordinance 19.08 for the general development plan submitted by Adam Coyle for constructing an apartment project at 124 Rosewood Avenue. The planning commission approved with Bano Moving, seconded by Millson, to recommend to the village board the approval of the general development plan submitted by Adam Coyle for constructing the apartment project at 124 Rosewood Avenue, contingent upon the recommendations in the village planner's memo dated October 29th, 2019. That motion carried seven zero. So we have two possible motions to consider, want me to go through these first, or?
Just so you know, the ordinance number is actually 1910.
1910, sorry, okay, 1910.
Yep, thank you. But yes, we're gonna do the first motion.
Okay, so the first motion, so by two-thirds vote, we can suspend the rules and waive the first and second readings at tonight's meeting. Do I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, then we have a second possible motion to consider. That's, if someone wants to make a motion to adopt ordinance 1910, then we can talk about it a little bit. John makes a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, by Randy? All right, Matt, do you want to walk us through this?
Yeah, very briefly, this is for the opposed apartment building project that Adam Coyle has been pursuing. This is a general development plan approval, which is an ordinance amendment, which basically creates an overlay zoning district. The underlying zoning classification is planned business, so all of the rules in the planned business district would apply, except for three areas where this ordinance would grant flexibility from those rules. And that's the function of a planned development overlay zoning district. So if this ordinance is adopted, essentially, you're revising the zoning classification,
So it's planned district, subject to a planned development overlay, which grants those three areas of flexibility. There would still need to be later on in the process what's called a specific implementation plan that, and, and that's where you would get into the details of the site design, landscaping, all of that kind of stuff. This is really intended to deal with higher level zoning issues.
All right, any questions on this? Amanda, yeah?
In light of the recent stormwater discussion we've had, can you just refresh my memory? What kind, what kind of soil is there right now and what kind of plan is in place to handle runoff and stuff?
That'd be more like an S.I.P., so kind of a site plan that'll be discussed.
That's, so that's coming?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Not really dealing with a G.D.P. zoning type of thing like this is, but, but yes, we are addressing, or they are addressing it, but we've not seen that yet.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance nineteen ten. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Drickney, for your spectacular work this evening.
You're welcome.
All right, we are moving back. Do you need to sign something?
Not right now.
Okay. Public appearances, we have none, approval of minutes. So we have September twenty-third, twenty nineteen special meeting, October seventh, twenty nineteen regular meeting, October seventh, twenty nineteen first budget and joint park board meeting, and October fourteenth, twenty nineteen, the second twenty-twenty budget and joint library board cable TV committee meeting. Can we do these all at once?
Sure.
Do I have a motion to approve these minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve all four meeting minutes at once.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I think I'll abstain from these because that wasn't on the board at the time.
Okay, duly noted, thank you, David. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We have approval of vouchers tonight. So we have the voucher list for November eighteenth, twenty nineteen in the amount of eight hundred twenty-two thousand sixty-five dollars and eighty-two cents. Can I have a motion to approve to get this up for discussion, please?
I'll move that.
Second.
All right, questions? Yes, Jerry?
Yes, probably the bulk of these are going to be for Jeff Rau.
Excellent.
He's been awful quiet tonight, so I'll make him feel calm. Page one, Water Beacon Service, what is that?
Water Beacon, oh, that's our new software and tracking service, or tracking software, and we're switching over to a new reading device and software for reading our meters, the individual meters on all the residents.
So that's when they drive around and read the meters?
Correct, so, so we're working with meters and transponders at over ten, twelve, fifteen years old, and so they're phasing that old stuff out, and we're phasing the new stuff in, and so this is the start of that.
So are they going to have to start entering residences now and installing devices?
Just as we do meter change outs, yes.
Just when you do a meter change out, okay. Page seven, Bolttronics.
That one's for the library. We have a security camera and the DVR on the system broke, and so that was to replace the DVR portion of the system so that we can continue to use the existing system.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Baker Street Consulting on page eight.
That's also, that's the fundraising consultant. It's helping us with the capital campaign.
So is that a, what period is that payment for?
It's a, one month.
One month, okay. I hope he's raising a lot of money.
We're doing everything we can.
Okay, yeah, it was, okay. Also, page eight, Alpha Controls, Boiler Controls and Valve Controls, twenty-one, or actually, it's forty-four thousand dollars.
That's what the board approved, probably during, during the budget, I think, October, wasn't it? That's for the P.D., Jerry.
For the P.D.?
Yeah.
Was that bid?
No, it was, it was part of the, the same contractor is doing the work on the, as had in the past.
Okay, all right, thank you. And same page, Verisi Service Squad, either Squad one fifteen or Squad one eighteen or both, new transmissions, forty-two hundred dollars, is that, and the chief is gone, is that, was there an accident?
I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I don't believe there was an accident on either of those. It was just the transmissions were going down on them, and one of them will be rotated out next year.
Okay, so they're getting close to ending.
Typically, when you see transmissions on the squad, it's, they're getting near the end of their lives.
Yeah.
The squad itself.
Okay. And those are my questions, thank you.
I have one. Mike, I don't know, maybe this is yours, sixty-four hundred, Oregon School District, the recreational twenty nineteen summer program, is that just our portion that we put in?
Yeah, we pay, we pay them eleven thousand dollars a year.
As, as part of our?
We must have got invoice written, right?
I think we did, yes. Yes, yeah, they sent us a invoice.
Okay. We just, that's just our portion?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Here, David.
This is on the credit cards, I think, under nineteen. Training mileage, four hundred ninety-five miles, that's a lot of training miles. Was that for multiple police officers or it looks like a police training of some kind?
What page are you on?
Oh. It's under item nineteen, I don't know, page four of the, of what looks like cash dis- disbursements, electronic payments.
Is that for mileage, is that for electronics? No, that's for mileage, yeah.
That could be training or mileage, it's probably a.
Was it a, like a conference fee or whatever?
Then there's a whole series of officers that went to training and it could be, yeah.
There's the same one down on Gilbertson there for training miles, the exact same amount, yeah.
What do we use for reimbursement for mileage, just offhand, is it, do you know? Is it the IRS certain?
I think the four hundred ninety-five dollars was the registration.
Frustration fee, it makes sense, but.
Yeah.
Because they're probably taking a squad to be around.
Yep, okay.
They don't typically get reimbursed any kind of mileage because they have a training vehicle that they use.
Anything else? All right, I have a rule call, please, for approval of vouchers. Peterson?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Lish?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Balig?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So now we're at the portion of our agenda where we have community input. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including on items not listed on our agenda. Are there folks that would like to speak to us tonight on community input? All right, item thirteen, proclamations and announcements, are there any board comments? Right, staff comments, we have lots of upcoming meetings, anything that you want to highlight here?
Just, maybe just a few of them. We, December ninth, second Monday of December, we're having a meeting to talk about the treatment plan, facility plan with Jeff and our consultants. Hope you have that on your calendars. And then we're having a joint meeting with the library board on the sixteenth, we're going to be talking, Jerry, construction manager.
Very good.
Yeah, there's maybe going to hire one, we're going to talk about it.
Okay. Sounds like a good plan.
I know it is. And then.
Been asking about it.
I know you have.
Really, Jerry?
Hadn't noticed.
It's not that I worry or anything, you know.
Never, never. And then.
So we have no, we have no meetings at twenty-third to the thirtieth, right?
Unless you want to, but typically we take those Mondays off for the holidays.
Very exciting. Okay, cool, keep going.
And then, and then we are going to have a meeting on January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, a public works meeting I was mentioning about the stormwater, we're taking the ideas from the stormwater forum and we'll start talking about it at, at that meeting. And I know Jeff's got something in the packet, we'll talk about that a little bit, so.
Excellent.
Gee?
Yes?
Can I bounce back to board comments, and actually, it's a question for Jeff. Leaf pickup and brush pickup, is that all done or?
You're going to talk about that later in the meeting. Did you see that?
I'll hold it.
There's a, yeah, there's a leaf.
We have a leaf.
Okay.
Do you want me to jump ahead?
No, sorry.
I think we want to keep that.
Patience, patience.
Yes.
All right, so we are going on to fourteen A, if that's all right. All right, so under communication and miscellaneous business, so item A, discussion on possible action regarding a write-off of a two thousand five outstanding late fee and twenty-twelve non-sufficient funds. We have recommended motion to write off Seon Guards' two thousand five outstanding late fee of twenty-four dollars and Melissa Kaiser's twenty-twelve non-sufficient funds fee of twenty-four dollars. It's been on the books for a long time.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? All right, so we've just given up on.
Sir, who needs a second?
Oh, I did.
Thank you.
Yes, so we've given up on collecting these dollars, I'm assuming.
And the second one, the library board approved on these items, thought we should approve it as well, so.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do we take any kind of formal collection, action on this stuff? I can't remember, it seems like.
And there's a certain amount we feel it's not worth doing, I shouldn't, I hate saying that on TV, but.
Too late.
Yeah. I think we actually said unofficial caution, you should explain this. Lisa, so you're not going to? What I'm going is that there's this.
It probably costs more than twenty-four dollars to collect the outstanding fee of twenty-four dollars.
Okay. But we do pursue it, I should say.
Thank you.
It's frustrating, but this is the way it is.
It happens.
All right, so do I have a motion to write off those two?
I think we have it.
Great, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, so now we have a review of the library's fundraising progress report and campaign timeline. Jennifer, do you want to give us any highlights on this, if information or package?
Just the, the progress update was something requested by trustee Balig, so we've been providing that on a monthly basis about activities that are going on for our campaign. The timeline, Mike and I were talking about, and we were trying, just trying to put some context into the, the scope of the campaign, the plan for that. And then we had tentatively talked about having the library board and the village board meet again in June, June of twenty twenty, and that ties in with the schedule as presented here for the capital campaign as provided by the fundraising consultant, which completed a feasibility study on our fundraising capacity earlier last year. We have a steering committee and a number of campaign volunteers that have been meeting really frequently and working very hard to do everything we can to raise funds for the new library. We're doing everything we can to make that possible, so this just kind of gives you a reminder of that, that process.
Very good. Any questions on that? Yeah, Amanda?
I don't know if you want to speak to this just now, but what's the one hundred women project?
There is a fundraising effort that's very popular called one hundred women. There's also a hundred men to kind of counteract that, just to be gender equitable. But it's the idea that a hundred people can come together and make a big impact. And so the idea is a hundred women come together and each contribute a thousand, a thousand dollars themselves or raise a thousand dollars, and together that hundred women can make the impact of a hundred thousand dollars together. There's different ways that manifests itself, but that's kind of the concept behind the initiative.
Okay, thanks. Cool. All right, thank you, Jennifer.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Look forward to the next report.
I look forward to raising all the money.
We need to find the ten thousand women.
Want to be limiting, right? Ten thousand people.
All right, so item C, we have a discussion on possible action regarding the twenty nineteen audit engagement letter. We have a recommended motion to approve the twenty nineteen audit engagement letter with Johnson Block and Company, Inc. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Second.
A motion and a second. This is our annual audit, correct?
Correct.
Required.
So are you still happy with them, Lisa?
Yes.
How many years have we used them?
I think this will be the fourth year.
How often do we do a review for, I'm sorry, I should ask.
No, go ahead.
How often do we ask for RFPs for new auditors?
Yeah, we just did one four years ago, so we contracted with them for three years.
Three years?
And then we've just, it's just a continual now. And I think the prior service we had had for probably.
Seven.
Seven or eight years.
I, I, I told Lisa this numerous times, to me, that they're my favorite auditors I've worked with. I mean, that Lisa works with, but I mean, as far as reading their audit and her presentation, I, I find it very, I think, I think they're a really good auditing firm. I, I first encountered them at the district, fire district, and I thought, wow, just an excellent job.
I enjoy their reports.
Yep, I guess really well done, yeah.
All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item D, we have a discussion on possible action regarding the payback of general fund advance of two thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars and seventy-nine cents from the room tax fund. We have a recommended motion to approve the payback of the general fund advance of two thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars and seventy-nine cents from the room tax fund for curation of room tax. Please note this funding will be from the village's thirty percent share of the room tax collected. Does someone want to make that motion, please?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All right, questions on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So item E, we have a review of investments, building permits, and connection and impact fees. Questions for staff on this, or anything you want to highlight, Mike?
We're having a good year, right, Lisa, for building permits?
Yes, we are.
Which means this will help with future budget, because, you know, we live off our net new construction, so we always talk about that, and so this is, this is good for us. In the good year.
We've had a really good year with the duplexes, as you can see, last year we had four total, and this year we're up to ten already.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you. All right. Item F, we have a discussion and possible action regarding a payoff of a smaller state trust fund loan for the former motel property. We would apply the balance of the loan, which is thirty-eight thousand seven hundred forty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. We would apply the sale of property, which is eleven thousand three hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents, for a total payoff of fifty thousand one hundred three dollars and ninety-seven cents. So we have recommended motion to approve the total payoff of fifty thousand one hundred three dollars and ninety-seven cents state trust fund loan on March fifteenth, twenty twenty, for the former motel property. Someone like to make that motion, please?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Mike, do you want to explain this a little bit?
Sure, so we, we took out a loan from the state to buy the motel property, and then we took out another loan to pay for taking the motel property down, or building down, excuse me, and, and then cleaning up the site, but what happened was we, we didn't need the balance of the loan to do that because when we sold the property, when the village sold the property to Dan Bertler, that was part of the condition, was that he cleaned the site up, which he did. And so we don't, we don't need to spend the money. And it's at a higher interest rate than we could get if we, once we go out to market. So we, Lisa and I feel like it makes sense financially to use the balance of a loan, and, and you can do this, this is one of the advantages of state trust fund, you can pay it back early. And then we're using some of the, the money we, the village received from Dan, Dan's purchase of the property to pay off the loan. We're going to save some, we're going to save some interest in the TIF for which needs it, it's underwater, so. And we will eventually have to borrow money from Park Street and everything, but we can't really be using this loan for that, so. And the, and the property is cleaned up, so there's really no need for the, for the balance of the loan anymore.
Yes, Jerry?
Did you mean it's underwater literally, or it's just out of funds?
Financially.
Out of funding? Okay.
About distress, does that even, is a better word?
I know, I'm just being a seer.
It's, it's after eight o'clock.
But I, I think it shows that the, I know there's some comments about the board's deal with, deal with selling that property to Dan, but it shows that we're able to save some money by he, him having to clean up the site and then actually taking some of the property or the money we got for the property to pay off this loan, which is saving the village money and the TIF money.
Good idea.
All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have taken care of item G, so on to item H. We have a discussion on possible action regarding the complete mandated state housing affordability report. We have recommended motion to approve the proposal from Vanderwall and Associates to assist the village staff in completing the mandated state housing affordability report in the amount of seven thousand eight, eighty-seven dollars. Please note the village staff is also working with the village attorney's office to complete the mandated state housing fee report. Both reports must be posted on the village's webpage by December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Someone like to make this motion, please? I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, so this is a mandate from the state of Wisconsin, correct?
Correct, so.
Do they give us any money to do this?
Nope, no. So we talked about this at the housing coalition meeting last week, so the coalition has been wanting us to, the staff, to generate this type of report, and we haven't done that, and I told them that why we didn't do that, have done in the past, is because the village has gotten criticized for talking about somebody's property. We have no choice, the state's making us do it, so we're going to actually have to develop. So we're going to actually have to develop a map with Elise's help and Van De Waal's help to identify where we could potentially do affordable housing. And it's got to be posted on the webpage. So when people get upset about it, I'm just going to say it's a mand, that's why I put the word mandated on here, is that the state is mandating that we do this.
What's the penalty if we don't?
Part of it is you can't charge impact fees.
Really, quite frankly, I'm viewing this as a freebie to the developers, because they're getting all this information that we have to pay for, and they don't have to go out and develop a loan.
Reports we have to, we have to do this, and then what's called a housing fee report. So this is probably going to cost the village. I think, I think Elise and I were talking about, we probably will not make Van De Waal come for $1,000 to present it. We'll present it, but it could, between this and the other report, I'll bet you we spend $10,000, $11,000 doing the reports. And we have to do them so we can be collecting impact fees, so.
But is it actually effective in drawing developers if they can say, oh, look, here's land designated for something like this? Does it help?
Well, except that, except that we've always been very sensitive about not having a map in the village hall talking about someone's property. And, and I just, I just don't like doing that, and.
It's more effective to do this on a relationship, individual basis?
Exactly.
Which is what we have been working on. And it's just unfortunate now that it's just going to make people angry. People that we've potentially been working with to purchase their property, now it's going to be on a map on our village website.
So what we're trying to be very sensitive about, but we do have to meet the state law, and so. Elise, you have anything to add to this?
Just that I think this is a new requirement, so we don't really know yet if it'll actually equate to affordable housing being developed.
There's better, I think there's better ways of doing it, man, than to ask.
Actually, it also probably drives up the potential acquisition cost. Because people see that on a map, and they go, oh, now I can charge another 25 grand for my property.
Yeah, the other thing I wanted to note is, we're expecting that if this mandate continues, that in future years, the cost will look to be less, because we'll have the template for both the fee report and the affordability report, and we'll just be making small updates as changes occur. And Elise, I know has a template for the fee report that will just update each year, so hopefully that cost is just higher this first initial year to get.
That's a good point, yeah. We won't be doing this every year, this expense, yeah, that's true. But still. But I just want to make sure the board knew that we're doing two of them this year, and we have to get it done by the end of the year, so.
Maybe this is an inappropriate question, but is there a way that we can recover these costs through the people that use it? I mean, if developers come in and use that map or that information to identify where they want to build, is there a way we can implement another fee for that?
We have, we have to have it in the fee resolution, for one thing, our annual fee that we do every December. And then you have to be careful that you're not discouraging someone from looking at the parcel, because they don't want to pay the fee.
That's true.
So I probably said, I probably wouldn't do it.
I understand there's a balance between what other communities will do and what we will do. But this is a cost to me that we shouldn't have to bear unless we, as a village board, deem it to be a priority for this community.
You know, in the past, I was saying this, you know, I was talking to Elise about this. In the past, the state was really big on, not the state, but people at the state Capitol were saying, oh, unfunded mandates. They don't, they don't talk about this anymore. That's what this is, it's very similar to Elise and I, we complain about every year, we spend all this money, the money in the TIFs to do those annual reports. It's another unfunded mandate. Now, we pay, we charge that to the TIF, but, you know, the state makes us do these reports, and we pay it. And it feels, you know, those taxpayers are paying for this.
It's less money we can give to the developers to develop.
Yeah, good point, Jerry.
There's some history behind these, which I don't want it, it's politics, I don't want to, you know, it's what it is, and that's why.
Yeah, we get to whine about it.
I feel good for five minutes.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve this proposal. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item I, we have a discussion on possible action regarding Janesville Street, South Prairie Parkway intersection evaluation and warrant analysis. We have a recommended motion to approve a contract with SRF Consulting Group for an estimated fee of $6,500 for the Janesville Street, South Prairie Parkway intersection evaluation and warrant analysis. So before we make that motion, Jeff, do you just want to kind of give us an update on that, on that area?
Sure, yeah, exactly. So at the October 21 meeting, we had a lot of comments from residents and those concerned about the, kind of what was going on around at the intersection. And out of that meeting, we were directed to solicit some proposals from engineering firms. I did that right away, and we gave them from that following Tuesday, about a week and a half to get back and get the proposals to us. They got this to us on the first, Friday the first, and we evaluated those. I provided my recommendation, and, and, you know, what we're looking for basically is to be able to hire this firm, to be able to look at the geometric conditions of the intersection, do traffic counts, look at possible, we call them short-term, low-hanging fruit type of improvements, whether they're striping, whether it's bump outs, whether it's temporary bump outs, that type of thing. And then all the way up to intersection warrant analysis, whether signals are warranted based on, on the crash history, severity of crashes, number of crashes, or just pure volume of traffic going through there. So we did get from four firms, SRF Consulting, JT Engineering, Strand Associates, and KL Engineering. You can see the summary in the packet there of what we received back from them. I think honestly, one or two of them are maybe a little higher scoped, which is, you know, I don't, I just don't, I don't fault them for doing that other than they, you know, sometimes they want to make sure we're covering all the bases, and I think we are. I'm recommending that we go with SRF Consulting. I think their, their cost, you'll see, is a little lower than others, and I think it's, it's a little lower because they've kind of, they're ready to hit the ground running and be able to do this, because they've already done an evaluation of Wolf Street. They're, they're the firm that was hired by Town and Country to do the traffic study for the Park Street, Janesville Street intersection project. And so that was done last year, so they've already collected some traffic data at Wolf and Janesville Street. So it's my recommendation that we award to SRF Consulting. They've done a nice job on other projects. All these firms, actually, I was very pleased with what we got back. All of them seem to have very thorough and well-thought-out proposals, and I've included those proposals in your packet for review.
Any questions? Yes, Jerry?
What question am I going to ask, Jeff?
Where is this going to get funded from?
Yeah.
Well, we're funding this from the, let's see, what do we have in here?
Nothing.
It's out of, yeah, it's out of 405, 405.
Yeah, 405.
Did I miss it?
Remind us what 405 is again?
The street improvements, yeah.
And, and actually, you know, and also in the 2020 budget, you know, we've provided, I believe,
$50,000.
For such studies like this ongoing at other intersections in the village.
Is that in your memo? Am I just?
The what? No, no, that's not.
Oh, okay.
No, you're right, I usually have that in there.
Okay. Scared me.
So I know in your memo you said that you weren't as concerned about the three-month timeline, because we're not going to be doing anything in the dead of winter anyways.
Correct.
Valid point. But why is there, like, that's a big swing between five weeks and three months? And I just, like, for my mind, five weeks or fewer sounds better, and then we can link it to the next steps.
In the next five weeks, we're going to have hunting season, Thanksgiving, and all the holiday vacations, end of the year, and everything like that. I think five weeks is a little unrealistic from a, from a time schedule for what we're looking at. Especially, and I got an email today from one of the consultants, actually the SRF consultant, that said they're actually going to hold off, like, two weeks on collecting traffic data, just because in the next two weeks, things are a little funky to begin with. So because of hunting season and people coming home and just, and kids out of school, all that type of stuff. So, yeah, I mean, everyone kind of has their idea of what, you know, based on the load of what they have to do. And we're kind of at the whim of whether or not they, you know, what they're saying, you know, will take to be done. I've told them that we'll want to hit the ground running and expedite it, so we'll kind of push them on getting that done earlier. But we won't be putting anything out there in the middle of winter anyhow.
I guess I'll have to be patient.
Yep, yep.
Yes, Jerry?
I assume that the outcome of this study will be some recommendations. I assume we're going to get that for $6,500. What, how are we going to fund any recommendations, since this is like after the budget's prepared?
Correct. We'll have to figure that out.
Okay.
You know, we, we may have to come back and actually amend our borrowing, our recommended borrowing and CIP for 2020.
The timing will actually be very good, even though it's not in the 2020 budget. When Lisa and I go out, we come to the board with elders in the springtime to do our annual borrowing.
Okay.
We could do it at that point, we just would amend the budget then, Jerry.
Okay, and is there a dollar amount that's in the capital plan for this, or?
No.
No?
This would be a new project.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, Corey?
I had the same concern as Jenna with the timing, and as much as we can't really put any permanent things in, I guess I would try to push, you know, the consultant to see if there are any short-term recommendations that they could get those to us quickly, so we could implement things that are possible to implement in the weather conditions that we'll have on a shorter timeframe.
Yeah, the other thing we have to remember is, we're also dealing with the fact that it's a county road. And so if, if, even if they come back with a short-term recommendation, if it's work that's going to happen on Janesville Street, that'll have to go through Pam and the Dane County, and they're sometimes not as fast either in their process. But yeah, no, I agree, that was my plan all along, is I want to let them know, people want to, want to know what this is going to.
I'm just thinking if there's things like, you know, signs on Perry Parkway or temporary cones or something like that, that could be done quickly, that we're not waiting three months until we.
Right.
Things like that.
Well, anything temporary we do is probably be like, I mean, like the adhesive-type delineators. I don't have many, much experience of doing those in the dead of winter. I don't know if those stick, or if you have, I mean, I'm sure we could just heat up the asphalt and make them stick and stuff like that, but.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve this contract?
I'll make the motion to approve the contract with SRF.
All right, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Is there a second?
Amanda, thank you.
All right, item J. We have a November 11 storm water forum recap. We have a note from the village administrator. In addition to thanking the panelists who participated in the forum, I want to thank Director of Public Works Jeff Rao for finding time in his schedule to coordinate the forum, and Director of Planning and Zoning Administrator Elise Cruz for providing assistance during the forum. Overall, it's well-received by residents who attended, and their input provided some helpful insight for stormwater issues in the village. So Jeff, you have a memo in here with the recap, thank you for that.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I, I know we had some board members present, and I would encourage, and David, you mentioned watching it online. I encourage, if you haven't had a chance, you can go through, and on OCA Media, it's there, and it's good. I thought, I thought we had an excellent evening, some excellent discussion. I think there was a very strong presence of what kind of what's going on and what we're experiencing, as well as, you know, showing it's what we're experiencing, not only village-wise, but regional-wise, and throughout Dane County and the state. So I thought that was really good. I kind of summarized a little bit about it, but I think some of the takeaways that you'll be seeing coming from my office will be, we're going to be looking at, working with Elise and working with Matt in addressing, probably beefing up and developing a sump pump ordinance, which is, you know, a lot of the complaints that we get, neighbor complaints, are dealing with sump pumps, and we just don't address that well in our ordinances. Looking at possible ways we can reduce irrigation water usage. You know, we have an inordinate amount of rain occurring this last summer, and everyone's still irrigating their lawns, so that doesn't help the groundwater table at all. Look at the establishing a stormwater utility. I've always been under the impression that it is not feasible, really under expenditure strength to, to develop the stormwater utility. We were told at the meeting that, that that may not be totally true, so we're going to look into that.
Jeff, it's, again, it's a tax levy.
Tax levy, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I did that every rung, every single. But the, we're going to continue to evaluate any kind of development in low-lying areas. We don't have a lot of that, but that might happen around on Highway 14 and 138 that we'll have to really consider and look at. Possibly look at some private storm sewer needs in developments. That might be where people can discharge their sumps to. Look at possibly updating the 2008 village stormwater master plan. And then looking at possible options for private property owners, they can implement to reduce stormwater runoff. Some of these are like rain barrels, rain gardens, things that people can do on their own property to help kind of reduce. I mean, every little bit helps, right? I think that's kind of how we wanted to, what we wanted to take out of that as well. So, you know, we did stress that the village board is actively working to fund and to look at solving some of these problems, some of the larger problems as well. And we're always going to be looking at how we can improve, you know, improve what we're doing and how we're handling things. We're looking forward to working with you and the public on these future solutions. We're going to continue this discussion January 27 at the Public Works Committee meeting.
Yes, Corey?
I'd like to say I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend. I did watch the entire video, and I think staff and everyone involved did a fantastic job. I think it really identified, you know, some things that we need to work on. It also, you know, pointed out that, that we are trying to do what we can, but we do have a very large problem to deal with, and we can't solve everything at the same time. So thank you to everyone involved with that. I think it was great feedback. It was great to hear that, that the work we did with the drainage district with dredging has actually somewhat helped some people, which is always great to get feedback like that. But I appreciate everyone's input that was at the meeting too, so, thank you. Thank you.
Yes, yes, if you'd like to speak, you can come up here.
I just want to ask a question. Did I miss where public input could be put in on any of the topics here?
Yeah, that was a while ago, but if you have something that you'd like to.
Because it was at the beginning of, if it's not on the agenda, that, you know, we have public input.
Yep, what would you like to talk about?
You know, Janesville and Perry Street is on the agenda, but, you know, everything else has not had anything as far as is there any other public input? You know, I can read the agenda and see, you know, Jeff is recommending that you approve for SRF, but what are the discussions?
Yeah, so unless someone raises their hand, normally we don't. But if you're up here, what would you like to say?
Okay. I guess I would just like to know, Cindy Matulie, 567 Firewell. Last week, or two weeks ago, you said you had four proposals, short-term proposals for the intersection, that were going to be discussed this, at this meeting. Yet they have not been discussed.
I said I had received four proposals from engineering firms.
Yeah, so those four proposals are in the packet.
Those are the ones that are commented on in the packet there.
Okay, because that's not the way that it was taken from the last meeting.
You must have been misunderstood.
That it was four proposals for short-term things that were going to be happening.
Right. No, I'm not making short-term proposals out there. That's why we're hiring the traffic engineering experts to do that. I had, I let them know at the last meeting, I, just because we've been trying to keep everyone up to speed on this, I let them know that I had received four proposals from engineering firms.
Okay, so we're going to wait three months?
Correct.
And then we're going to wait indefinitely until the county can decide what they're going to do? And then Highway 14 is going to close down in the spring?
Highway 14 remains open.
The bridge is going to close down for work? So that means increased traffic coming through Oregon?
Correct.
And by then, in the spring, we're still not going to have a plan in place for that intersection or anywhere on Janesville?
Well, I think by the spring, we will have a plan in place.
Well, as long as it, as long as it takes the county to do things, we're not. Realistically, we're not. Unless, unless, unless the board and everybody else gets on Pam and gets, you know, it should be a joint effort of whatever the consulting firm is advising the village on, should be the same thing that the county is also being involved with, because it is a county jurisdictional intersection.
Correct. We're working with the county. I mean, Pam was at that meeting that we were hearing about?
I know she was. I know she was, but I also know how it works too. So, I mean, we're gonna wait three months for the firm to come back with something for us as a village and then you're gonna present it to the county and it'll be another three months potentially, potentially. Not saying that it will, but potentially. That's six months from now. That's already when Highway fourteen construction will be, will have begun. And we're behind the ball then. We're already behind the ball, 'cause we're not doing anything yet. I guess that's where I'm just getting frustrated at. I know that things don't happen overnight, but it seems like we're dragging our feet as to what we're really going to do.
We're not dragging our feet and the village board is not dragging their feet on it.
'Cause, I mean, if it's an issue with the county, then I guess the county needs to be pressured a little more into, they need to be here, they need to be working with you guys and getting this done.
So, every, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, I understand your frustration. Again, I'm new to the board. I've only heard about this issue since I was appointed. It's been a while. But the fact is, if we're gonna do something, it's something that's right. And unless we get that input from the consultants, we don't know what the best options are. Now, with regards to what you're saying about the county, I don't know the county process. The county's certainly gonna hear about this in the news articles that are written to, after tonight. I think we want them to be a partner in this and not an enemy in this and not dragging their feet.
And that's what needs to happen.
It's incumbent upon us, in my view, is to work with them, that I'm sure our staff are doing. Let's just try to get something done that's right so that everyone is protected at that intersection.
And that's why we're here, to keep pushing this forward.
And I understand that. I'm not saying you shouldn't be here. All I'm saying is, it's gonna take time and we've got the right people involved in it.
I've been in public service for twenty-five years, sir. I know how the government works and how long things can take, okay?
And I'm not saying you don't.
And you know what? We're not gonna stop coming and we're not gonna stop, you know, pressuring you guys to get this moving
and I'm not saying you should.
And to get things done.
What I'm saying is, let's get the right answer.
But you guys need, you guys need to be working with the county mutually together with the, with this firm and what the steps are going to be. The Highway fourteen bridge closing at one thirty-eight is going to be huge. It's going to bring a lot more traffic into this village where we already have enforcement problems on Janesville with speeding and with pedestrian safety. And if we're gonna wait another three months for the consult to come back just for the village and then present it to the county, that's not working together with the county. That's, that's us coming to them and saying, well, this is what we have. What do you think?
And that's not what I'm hearing our staff is doing, is waiting. They've got the consultant on staff. They're in communications with Pam, whoever she is. I don't know her personally.
She's just an highway commissioner, David.
She's, she's the executive.
So I think, you know, what we're trying to do is the right thing. All I'm asking of you is let's do the right thing when we get the recommendation from our consultants. If you disagree with what the consultants say, come and tell us. That's the great time for it.
We'll be here every two weeks. We're not going away. But we're also gonna keep the pressure on of this needs to be addressed.
It is being addressed.
Corey, did you have a...
Yeah, I, you know, I feel your pain with, with the speed. I wish I could snap my fingers and it would be done tomorrow. We are working. We have a consultant engaged. Ultimately, we can't push the county at anything until we have the engineering study that backs up what we have to do. Statutorily, they're required to have improvements meet the manual of uniform traffic control devices. We need traffic studies. We need information to be able to do that. So we're getting the ammunition together to say, here's what we need to do and we're involving the county before we even get that information to say this is coming. So, staff, I think, has heard loud and clear tonight, keep in contact with the county. And, you know, once we get that engineering study, I'll be pushing as hard as you are to make sure that we're getting this done as quickly as we can.
I have some other comments about it, but I'll save it for another night. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, in the future, if there's an agenda item that you wanna talk about, just raise your hand and I'll be happy to, to, um, bring it forward. Anyone else wanna talk about anything? I, I don't wanna ignore anyone. All right, we're moving on. Item K. Discussion and possible action regarding brush pile grinding and disposal contract. We have a recommended motion to approve the contract with the Mobile Reduction Specialists, Inc. out of Sturtevant, Wisconsin, for a three-year period for grinding, disposing, disposal of the village brush pile. Haven't we already done this? I feel like we've talked about this before.
No, we...
Go ahead.
No, we, um, actually, uh, had, we hired them to do this last fall 'cause our brush pile was out of control and, and, uh, so we, we used them on a trial basis and, um, I asked them to provide us a, a three-year contract for it so that we can get them on a, a planned schedule twice a year. So our pile doesn't get huge, as huge as it did before.
Oh, okay, good.
And we were very happy with them this last time around, so. And this gives us a chance, if we end up not happy with them sometime, we can, we have the ability to terminate it.
All right, so do I have a, do I have a motion to approve this contract?
Motion approval.
Second.
Yes, it's in the budget, Jerry.
Good, good answer, Jeff, but it wasn't the right one. I'm just looking at this, this proposal. So if I understand it, it's six hundred and fifty dollars to mobilize the equipment. Six hundred dollars a load to haul it. And four hundred and fifty dollars for eight to ten hour minimum. Is that correct?
Per hour.
Okay.
It's, it's expensive to deal with our brush pile.
How were you able to budget for that?
Uh, we put eighteen thousand dollars this next year into the budget for, for that.
Okay, we think that'll be based on previous history?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Thank you. We hope. It's hard, you know, if, if we get a lot of, with a lot of, uh, huh? We could have storm damage. We could have something that, you know, we could have a tornado that goes through the village and we could see that go through the roof, but at least we'd have them on board to be able to help us with that. Or, you know, uh, with all the ashtrays, people are, now a lot of people are really cutting them down. And so we're seeing an increase in that out there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion in second to approve the contract. Is there, um, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Item L is FYI only. We have a Jefferson Street parking lot map. Jeff, did you do this?
I did that, yeah.
This is really good.
Thank you. I like the colors.
Where does this exist so people can, people who live there or people who are downtown know where to park?
This should be on the website.
Actually, I, I wanna add, ask sorry to put it on the front page. I was thinking about that last week.
We do have copies of these at the front desk and I emailed copies of these to Jefferson Crossing and, um, who else do we send these to? Huh? Yeah, we haven't done it through the businesses, but Candy can do that, but, yeah. This just helps clarify, um, where people can be parked.
Good, thank you very much. All right, item F, I mean, item M, leaf collection update.
Leaf collection update. As you can understand, our, our leaf, you know, we get this brand-new leaf collection truck three or four weeks ago and, uh, Mother Nature threw us a, a real good spin by snowing or, uh, giving snow on, uh, October thirtieth. We are still out collecting leaves on a daily basis. We have the truck out. As soon as we get a little more melt, we're actually gonna have two crews out. We'll have our other truck out where it's a little more safer to have them out when, with some of the snow melted away. I just assure people, we're gonna continue to collect leaves as long as we can. And just like we do every year, if we don't get to all the leaves in the fall, we will be back in the spring. And, uh, so that's, it's just kind of a battle every year. Sometimes we actually go through the entire village several times by the time we get the first snowfall and we're fine this year. All the leaves came down and then it snowed, or some of the leaves came down, it snowed and then, I've never seen as many leaves falling on snow as I did before. It was kind of, almost, it was kind of pretty actually, but, uh, um, so we're gonna continue to do that. They're working hard. They can also look at maps on the, online. People can look at the online maps. Candy, or Gary and Candy are making sure those are updated as, as much as possible.
All right, yeah, Jerry.
Are you done with brush pickup?
We're done with brush pickup.
Okay.
So I will tell, say that. If, I've seen some people trying to put brush in the leaf pile, we'll pass those by. We just, our truck doesn't, we, we just don't do those.
I've seen that too. That's why I bring it up.
Yep, yep, so if you want your leaves picked up, haul your brush down to the, to the brush pile. Good point.
Duly noted.
Jeff, could you tell people what would happen if you tried picking that up?
Uh, what, with a, with a...
With the brush and the leaves.
Well, it would, it would get stuck in our impeller. Is that what you're hitting at?
Yes.
It would break the equipment.
Yeah, stuck in the chute and the impeller and everything like that and can cause damage and, and stuff, so. Yeah, it's just not, they're, they're completely different pieces of equipment. A brush grinder is, can brush things up, our, our brush grinders can, can crush and, uh, shred things up like six or eight, ten inches in diameter. Whereas the leaf vac is just a, a, literally a vacuum, so.
What do we do with all the, um, brush once it's ground up? Does that company haul it away or...
That company hauls it away and that's an important, that's, we do pay a lot extra to have that hauled away, but, um, we, it, we've, when we do it ourselves, we have to load it, haul it, dispose it and we've got a lot of man-hours, um, that we end up having to do that and it just, it's, it taxes our staff and, and equipment so much. That's why we're having them haul it away.
Any idea where they take it?
Some of them take it to Purple Cow. Um, some of it take it to, um, there's, I think, one up north of Wannakee and I think some of it's composted.
Very good, thanks.
All right, so, uh, next is report of committees, Oregon Fire EMS Commission, November seventh, twenty nineteen meeting. This is trustees Glish and Jacobson. Do you want to, one of you wanna take this over? All right, Jenna's gonna do it.
All right, so, um, the first one is for administrative services, uh, twenty twenty agreement between the Village of Oregon and the Oregon Area Fire EMS District. I make, I'm bringing this forward as a motion.
Sure.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Getting a little confused to how this goes. So, uh, I recommend that we approve this motion. Basically, it's, uh, the agreement that outlines what Lisa and, uh, the rest of the staff will do and for the Fire EMS Commission, handling payroll, vouchers, banking, um, all of that. And then we, uh, pay them for, the Fire EMS Commission pays the village back for those hours, so.
I'll second.
So, oh, so we have a motion in second to, um, approve that agreement. Any further discussion?
One question. How does this compare to what we already have? Is it just a rollover?
It's a little increase, yeah.
Yeah. I think if they continue to document their time, it gets refined.
Okay.
The second or third year we've done this, is that right?
Let's turn over now, isn't it?
Well, they've had a formal agreement.
Oh.
I'm not sure the last time we increased it. I'm not sure.
But, yeah, we're tracking our hours to give them a better understanding of how many hours are actually...
Yeah.
...collocated towards the fire district.
Yeah, so, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. All right, item two.
Item, uh, two, meeting information, just like a summary?
It's just, it's just meeting information. I just, I put it all together.
Yeah, so, um, there's some really interesting stuff that the fire department does throughout the month. So I encourage everybody to read all of the activities that our firefighters are participating in. It's pretty awesome, um, so, yeah.
Just that, a question if I may. It says that the approval to purchase the SCBA package, is that for, to replace all of the units?
So it's part of three, item three, right?
No, I'm looking at fifteen A two and then number six B.
Oh, in the, in the, in the chief's report?
Yeah, in the report.
Yeah, so we're gonna talk about that in item three. No, that's okay. That's okay. It's a good call out. Yeah, no, it's a good, good call out, so. But, great lead-in. We'll just go to number three unless there's any questions. So, in the, uh, capital improvement plan, we had twenty thousand dollars, the Fire EMS Commission had twenty thousand dollars listed for SCBA equipment that we were going to be purchasing this year. We were able to get, that, that was the Firehouse Subs grant, correct?
Firehouse.
Yep, so we got a grant from the Firehouse Subs, um, restaurant organization to purchase those SCBAs. So, uh, chief would like to, um, take that twenty thousand dollars and purchase, uh, personal protective equipment, ballistic vests essentially. But we wanted, since we, uh, approved as a board the capital improvement plan, we wanted to bring it, uh, before you all again for your, uh, hopeful approval on that. So I guess my motion that I'm bringing forward is to approve purchasing these, um, oh, wait. Not SCBAs. It's a personal section stuffed out with twenty thousand.
Rescue.
I'm kidding. I even took notes. It's great. That's why it's nine o'clock almost. Uh, rescue packages, so that's rope rescue equipment, airbag lifting devices. Those are cool. They put them under cars. Um, life, uh, safety for technical emergency responses. So that's what we're gonna buy instead of the ballistic vests, which Firehouse Subs grant took over. So the SCBA question is not number three, so.
So my answer is yes, because of the grant.
Yes.
Yes. Grant, good.
Long goes line.
Sorry.
That's all right. The, the granting foundation is okay with the switch to purchase the ballistic vests and this other equipment rather than the SCBAs? Or am I confused?
That's okay. This, uh, this money we're talking about, because we got a grant to purchase what we had already planned on using our, uh, the commission budget dollars for, this is to take the budgeted dollars and purchase something else. So the grant money will go to what we had applied for.
And the granting agency is fine with this?
Yeah, 'cause it's what we had applied for.
Okay, all right, okay.
The personal protective equipment. Now that I'm on the right page, sorry.
Now I got it.
Okay, well, I certainly didn't help that one, so.
That's huge though, because all of the fire department's SCBA equipment was getting very old and it all needed replacement. So that's fantastic that we could get this money from Firehouse Subs.
And the, um, the rescue packages, we found out, are also extremely old and a lot of them weren't even working. They had been used at a rescue that happened, I think, last year. Airbags and they blew out in this rescue. Thankfully, it was a successful, um, rescue, but now we need to replace those as well. So it's a really good opportunity to make sure that the fire department, the Fire EMS department has everything that they need, so. So my motion is to recommend changing the plan to purchase those and I'll need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Candy.
Yeah, sure. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. All right, thank you. Uh, on to item fifteen B. This is from the planning commission. We've already done item two, so we just have item one. Uh, this is a discussion and possible action with approval of the Bergamot Senior Townhomes condominium plant, plat, addendum number two and amendment number two to declarations for units seven through eighteen of lot four ninety-nine in Bergamot. The original plat was approved in July of twenty nineteen. So this motion is coming unanimously to us from the planning commission. So I would bring this, uh, motion to the village board to approve the Bergamot Senior Townhomes condominium plat, addendum number two and amendment number two to declarations for units seven through eighteen in lot four ninety-nine in Bergamot. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions on this, the final plat development of those townhomes? Yes, David?
I, I hate to do this, but I was a little slow when I was reading through this. I don't understand what they're really trying to, to, to change.
Yeah, here's, here's, I'll, I'll give you the, the four oh one one on this. Okay, when they originally came through with the original plat, um, it was, this surprised me too. It was just for this, these two units, um, was the original plat and the condominium declarations and all that type of stuff. They then started constructing these two, these two buildings, which are four additional units, and had to close on those very quickly, so they came in with the first addendum. That's when we started kind of getting wise to this and kind of said, just do the whole thing so we don't have to keep coming back. So that's what this, what's in front of you now is the whole thing. So that's why it's kind of the second addendum, I believe, to this.
Basically, David, these units are selling really quickly.
So they wanna move on quick.
And, yeah, so now they have the financing to continue to finish them.
Yeah, they have a lot of, they're, they're, they're doing a great job with them. I don't wanna imply that they're not doing a good job, because they're doing a great job of them. They're just very...
This is good news for our tax base.
No, good. I just didn't understand what the change was.
Yeah.
I was slow.
I think they were just conservative, I think, um, and it's the, yeah, they're selling. There's demand. Yeah, Corey.
Do, the owners that are already there, are they okay with all of these amendments to their declarations? 'Cause basically it's adding units, which changes, you know, their whole voting process. I'm assuming that they kind of knew this was coming and they're okay with it?
Well, the, the, the plat itself has always been platted, but...
The plat has always been platted that way, yeah. It's just the...
The plat has always been platted that way.
Well, the, the development plan has always been this way. The plat has...
That's, yeah.
The official plat is just now being shown as this, yeah, so. Um, we've heard nothing, like negative from...
Okay.
Have you driven in there? They're really nice-looking units.
I live right by them.
I live right by there.
Fifty-five and older. Steve could be.
I don't qualify yet.
Wonder if he's watching. Steve, if you're watching. All right, I'm not kidding. It's way past his bedtime.
Here we go. All right, so.
Is your cell phone ringing yet, Jeff?
That's really, Jeff Rau.
Yes.
Ears are burning.
Cell phone.
We have a motion and a second to approve this plat addendum and addendum number two. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We already did number two, so now we are going to item three. This is FYI only. This is a site plan submitted by Tracty and approved by the commission to enclose an existing framed area of their building at three fifty Braun Road. Please note that this was a very long discussion by the planning commission over colors, vertical panels, and lots of words I didn't understand. We have a really, really talented planning commission that knows their construction materials. So, the builder, yes, Elise, are you going to give us a little update on this?
Sure. Um, so, I've been working with Ryan Betner, who's the CFO over at Tracty. He's been very helpful and responsive. The planning commission decided to recommend that they kind of continue with this vertical blue panel, which was my recommendation as well. The building is about twenty-five feet or so at its highest point, so be a very large swath of just tan concrete to be walking or biking by, kind of very imposing. So, they were agreeable to continuing this blue vertical stripe pattern, and he actually followed up with me the next morning, right afterwards, with two different samples, kind of comparing the color against the existing blue, and made a recommendation as to which one I felt matched better. And they're working on ordering materials, and I'll, you know, stay in touch with him and make sure to drive by to keep tabs on the construction progress, and then do a final inspection and sign off once the construction is complete. But, I believe it should be done hopefully in the next couple of weeks, so they can have as much time as possible for their employees to work inside over the winter.
Thank you, Elise, for, for that. Any other questions? All right, so then, moving on to item fifteen three C. Board. All right, park board, trustee Horton, take it away.
Okay, so, fifteen C one A. Highlands of Netherwood Park, informational only. The village staff will install an informational sign and rendering on the park property, and in the meeting packet, there is a copy of that sign and rendering, so.
It's a good-looking sign.
Yeah, it is.
It's going up. They were drilling, or not drilling, they were hydro-explaining the holes for the sign today, so it may actually be up today or tomorrow.
Nice.
It looks great. It looks like a virtual drone has flown over the site.
Yeah, they did a really nice job of preparing this course.
So, then I'll move on to item B, which is discussion and possible action regarding Rettler's proposal for bidding design and construction oversight of the Highlands of Netherwood Park. For that possible action, the park board moved by Knutson, seconded by Schwast, to recommend the village board approve Rettler's proposal for bidding design and construction oversight of Highlands of Netherwood Park, and that motion carried five to zero. So, a copy of that proposal is in your packet. So, I'll make the motion to approve Rettler's proposal. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Just so I'm clear, we're talking about the one hundred and ten thousand plus fee rather than the one point one six five million, correct?
Correct. The one point one six five million is the construction cost.
Right, okay.
So, the design cost is roughly ten percent of the construction.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Agreed. Exciting. It's exciting. We haven't built a big park like this.
I know.
Time, it's exciting times. It really is.
All right, now you want to do item two?
Okay, on to item two, J.C. Park West. So, discussion of the village staff's next steps. Jeff, did you want to go through that, or did you want me to go through this?
I, I can do it if you want. You may do it, Jeff.
No, you, I'm, I'm part.
So, so, we were trying to make sure that, you know, we had a discussion, Corey. I know you had, you were at a conference.
Yeah, it wasn't at that meeting, so.
So, we were just saying to the park board that this was the staff's proposed next steps for the park planning in nineteen and in twenty twenty, and, and there'll be some things that we're going to come back to the, to the park board, looking for some direction. Like, you know, we're still doing the fundraising efforts. One of the things that, I guess, came out of the soccer meeting that a couple of you attended, is that we'll make a recommendation to the park board, and then that will come to the board, that whenever we start the J.C. Park West project, we'll do it after the soccer tournament ends in fall, which is, we've, we've talked about that in one, the organizations at our early morning meetings. We're going to be working with the local organizations to identify fields to use during the construction in J.C. Park West, and I think we're going to probably do more of that discussion at the park board level versus at the, at the staff level. We're already starting to work on identifying some temporary fields for soccer tournaments. Once the park is redeveloped, where they can put temporary fields in for their fall tournaments, and that was a concern I've heard from soccer, or we've heard from soccer. And then there is a minor revision that, that was brought up at a recent fundraising meeting, and at some point, we'll bring that forward to the park board. At this point, I think I'm a little reluctant to be changing that plan for the, you know, the tenth time. I'm exaggerating, but it's just, it's nice to have an adaptive plan. But I think I can see the advantage of tweaking a little bit as we go forward. And then, Lisa wanted me to mention that we have over two hundred thousand dollars now collected for, so, fundraising, so, I say collected, it's going to be dedicated to, committed to the park.
That's excellent news.
Yeah, I'm excited about that.
All right. Thank you, park board, for all your work on that. Thanks, Corey, for heading that up. Any comments or questions on that from board members? All right, so we have some minutes that requiring action that are in our packet from the cable TV and the library board. We have no unfinished business. Under new business, we have approval of pending new operator licenses. Has been recommended approval by the police department for stop and go. Reginald, aye, given's. Do I have a motion to approve that operator license?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We don't have any other licenses, right? Okay. And then we have a whole bunch of future agenda items. Yay.
Some things will be coming up in a couple months.
All right, so, without further ado, is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Done.
Got in before nine.
All right, eight fifty-five.